Skip one. Atif Khan. Had to go him anyway. Nishan Khan.
Nishan Khan.
Mohammed Taher.
Good afternoon, respected mayor and council members. My name is Mohammed Imran Taher. We're here for the Houston peace and harmony with South Asian communities. This has been addressed in detail by many speakers who showed up on the podium. I would just like to draw your attention to what is at stake and what will be impacted within the Houston community where both people from India and Pakistan have been living together for many, many years. You know, we, I'd like to draw your attention to a particular example where we support and live together as families, as friends, and as neighbors, where we are backing each other up on different occasions that happen. You know, we had a situation where we had a Hindu family. They're from India. They've been living there for a very, very long time, had daughters who were getting married. And in a situation like this, you know, they're living in the U.S. and they are of a marriageable age. And of course, you know, living overseas, you tend to, you have the freedom to eat, do whatever you please, and whatever they're fond of. They really preferred to have meat and eggs, which probably they may not have had or consumed when they were back home in India. And since they were of a marriageable age, what made the situation a little tricky was they were having certain marriage proposals within their customs that were coming, and they were not comfortable to the idea of a proposal that comes home and they will have to then address it as, you know, they wanted to avoid the situation. So they asked the neighbors, they asked us, that if you would be comfortable taking away the meat and the eggs, because they know we, as Muslims, would consume that. And we, you know, we would be obliged. And of course, the marriage proposal came, and a few, a couple of days later, they, we went back and we gave them that, you know, this is something that belongs to you, and we're returning it back. And the reply was that we, we actually gave you not to keep for us, but, you know, you could have consumed it as well. So in a, in a community where Hindus, Muslims, Indians, Pakistani-origin people live together, play together, you know, we have, we play cricket, we shop together, we work together. In an environment like that, where this event that's happening on 22nd has segregated and divided thoughts, emotions, passions, and feelings towards one another, created hostility for a city that's welcoming, city that's shouting out that we are inclusive, I would want you to draw attention to how would you link those people back again where one community is going.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCrystine.
Appreciate you coming and giving a positive perspective on peaceful society. And, you know, I think what the Arabs and the Israelis do is they exchange their young people. And it seems like the young people get along, and maybe it'll grow into peace and harmony. But I appreciate the positive story of, in this city, we get along. It's a beautiful sight, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Rafi Natarajan.
Not here.
Sahel Said. To be followed by Gazala Khan.
Good afternoon, mayor and the council members. God blessings upon each and every one of you. Thank you for allowing me to be here this afternoon. I wanted to bring the attention back to this issue of atrocities, human rights violation in Kashmir. This is not the case of politics between India and Pakistan. This is a larger issue of human rights, where the rights of Kashmiri people and the Muslims and the minorities in India have been, they're not given the rights. And atrocities and killing and oppression is going on throughout India, it's not only Kashmir. The state of Assam is also facing the same issues, and Kashmir is also having under curfew. The whole state of Kashmir, nine million people are under house arrest. Imagine, nine million people over 45 days does not have enough food supplies, does not have medicine, does not have ambulances to take people to the hospitals. Having said that, Islamic Society of Greater Houston, which I represent, represent the Muslims in this city, which is about 250,000. They not only come from India, they come from Pakistan, from Arab countries. So the Muslims are concerned about the conditions of minorities, especially Muslims in India. The man who has become the prime minister of India has blood on his hands now and in the past, when he was part of the genocide in a state of Gujarat, where we had, he had perpetrated, 30,000 people were killed during his time, in support of his government. So my request to the council and the mayor, I understand India is a very large country. I understand lot of business is at stake. As another speaker had mentioned, that we don't build businesses on the bodies of human being. We need to, America stands with justice, America stands with human dignity, America stands with human rights. And we as responsible citizens of this country, we need to uphold the American values, we need to uphold the human dignity, we need to uphold human rights. And that's what my request is.
Your time has expired.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker, Gazala Khan. To be followed by John Floyd.
Gazala Habib Khan. I'm the chairperson, Friends of Kashmir. Honorable mayor and the distinguished member of the City Council of Houston, thank you for giving me opportunity, for I am standing here in front of you all, with your permission, to point out that the prime minister of India, Modi, is a documented terrorist. U.S. Department of State revoked Modi's visa in 2005 because of his participation in Gujarat incident. And in 2002, he directed and supervised the burning of 2,000 men, women, and childrens in Gujarat, when he was the chief minister of Gujarat. If he is not the prime minister, he would be arrested on the arrival in USA. Since August 5th this year, he has put a population of around 10 million under the 24/7 curfew in Kashmir. Peoples have no access of food, medicine, they are burning their deads in their yards. Modi has become a lifelong member of the extremist RSS. It's a terrorist organization which believes on the Hitler's philosophy. They are not tolerating any other religion except Hinduism in India. They want to do away with Muslims, Christians, Sikhs, as well as the untouchable and lower classes in India. And in India, it's still the class system is going on. I implore, you want to honor, you not to honor this man who has no soft corner for mankind. I really appreciate my, some fellows were talking about the animal rights, but I want to tell you, in Kashmir, Kashmiri peoples don't have a basic human right, the right to live, just because of Modi's brutal strategies. We have envies hell to torture the oppressed of this world. Let's do it once again, from the great city of Houston, and don't welcome Modi here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker, Mr. John Floyd. To be followed by Matt Louw Khan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilmen, and women. I think I want to bring a different perspective to this issue. My name is John Floyd. I am a criminal defense lawyer by day. I spend the rest of my life fighting for civil rights as a volunteer civil rights lawyer for the Council on American Islamic Relations, and I am a board member of the Council for Islamic Relations in Houston. Twenty-five years ago, I married a Pakistani woman and was welcomed by this community that is, you've seen today. Since that time, I've had the pleasure of calling the people you've met today, my brothers and my sisters, and am disturbed at what is sprinkling inside of our community by the visit of Prime Minister Modi. When I first joined this community, they called it the Dacey Community. It was a community of both Hindus and Muslims and people from the South Continent. I didn't see any difference. I was born in Houston, you know, I had very little experience with Pakistanis or the Indians prior to that. But they all got along, because Houston is a great city. Mr. Mayor, I've seen you work so hard to visit all these communities and make your presence known. And Houston is a diverse city.
And I have.
And you have. And we appreciate that. You are our mayor, and we love you. What we are concerned with is that the way that this visit is, is being unfurled, that the welcoming of Prime Minister Modi without some accountability sends the wrong message. We would hope that the members of this council and, and our mayor would host this visit in a way that not only welcomes the people of India to our community and this visit of the prime minister, who, this is an official visit. We hope that we will also have an opportunity to ask the tough questions about what's going on, about what's happening in Kashmir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker, Matt Louw Khan. Ms. Demetrius. Is not present. Ms. Demetrius Smith?
I do not see her, not present.
Ms. Rita Mitchell?
Not here.
Ms. DeBorey Lane Allen? Ms. DeBorey, I have not seen her either. Ms. Catherine Milliken?
Ms. Milliken, she's not here.
Mr. Roy Bradley?
Mr. Bradley, she's not, Mr. Bradley? Is here.
Mr. John Schislewicz?
Hold on, hold on a second.
Mr. Bradley, I'm sorry, Mr. Bradley? Come on. Mr. Bradley will be followed by Mr. John Schislewicz.
Good afternoon. I came today to see if I can get some answer about a certain police officer. He, I understand he write quite a few tickets, by the words, and he's very rude. You have a seat there while I'm filing a complaint with him. And I had to talk to the sergeant. He had called the next night after, after we came down to, they told me that he worked at the Dairy Ashford Police Station there. We went over there to make a complaint. And the next night, the sergeant called and stated that this officer, he get a lot of complaints. And I talked to the people in my HOA meeting last week, we had a meeting, and this have the same problem that I'm having. This man, he drive with his lights off down Belfort, and just pull people over, just for, you know, my daughter, she had got this ticket because she made a right turn, and she made a right turn in the right, in the right lane, and proceed to get over to your left. And while I'm here, because, yeah, that's for license, he snatched the license out of her hand, very, very rude. And when sergeant called, he say, told me, he said, well, Mr. Bradley, he say, I wish you would come up to the station and have a conversation with me. And I didn't think that was right. And I told my daughter to file the complaint, because I have my neighbor that lived next door to me for 42 years. He don't even go that way, because this officer steady writing tickets. I wanted to find out, was he writing ticket for a quarter, or is he writing ticket to get overtime? Even the sergeant stated that he write quite a few tickets. So this is why I'm here.
One, one second. Councilmember McCashdettana.
Thank you for coming down. I read the synopsis that was written, I guess, by your daughter Tiffany Bradley.
Yes, she couldn't be here today, because they wouldn't let off, she worked for HISD.
Okay, and she couldn't be off today, so you are here representing her.
Right, she just started, I mean, they just started school.
I got it.
And they wouldn't let, wouldn't let her come.
Okay. So tell me, what would you like for the end result to be here?
Well, you know, I need to find out. By the words, this man, he write ticket just, just for, excuse, hell of it.
What was this, what was the ticket written for?
Illegal turn in the right lane.
Did she illegally turn in the right lane?
In the right lane.
Did she illegally turn in the right lane?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
We had, in the subdivision, Braven West, you got two lanes, head and south. One lane, you had to go straight, other lane, you go, you had to make a left turn.
Right.
And the right lane, you had to make a right, you had to make a right. He said that she made a right turn and got over, and got over. So she, this, I mean, this is how, everybody in the neighborhood, this man had rolled about 15 or 20 tickets for the same thing. And, you know, people, you know, he's kind of getting tired of, you know, and then he sit up there and drive with his lights off. We sat up there, you know, watching him one morning, he's in Braven, in West Belfort Townhouse, in the exit where you get out of it, sitting with his lights off, and then shoot up armed cars. And I don't think it's right, because she, she got, the lawyer's going to take care of the ticket, but I wanted to call to the council's attention. This man, even his sergeant said that he writes a lot of tickets.
But is he writing tickets for violations?
I don't think it's a violation, because it's got to be something, because, in other words, all officers out there, ma'am, in our HOA neighborhood, we got three ex-police officers that retired.
Right.
And they say the same thing. They know, and like I say, all police officers are not, you know, are not like that.
So is the issue that he wrote the ticket, or you felt like he was rude to your daughter?
No. The issue, wrote the ticket, writing tickets, when you don't necessarily have to write tickets. Because, I, in other words, they are, some of them are very rude. I experienced when I went up there to drop the complaints off to the gas station. I was up there, you know, I've never been in a police station. I goes up there, so to have a complaint, and the window's tinted, and I heard a gentleman say, might help you, I said, I have something to drop off. Have a seat, I'm on my lunch hour. And I said, how long are you going to be on your lunch hour? Fifteen minutes. Now, you know, constituents shouldn't have to, you know, put up with that.
Right. I agree. So tell, tell me what you want the end result to be here today.
In other words, I need to check, check. I have someone, you know, I know that the Houston Chronicle Investigative Reporter, they can check and see how many complaints that he been getting writing the ticket, because everyone can't be doing the same thing. I, you know, I came to voice my opinion.
He wanted to make us aware of what the issue is.
Yeah, right, right. Mister Wabbe, right.
Okay. Well, thank you for, for coming down and bringing this to our attention. I will follow up with the...
I appreciate it, if you will, because, like I say, see, I'm in real bad health, and I can't, you know, other words...
No, I totally understand, and you shouldn't have, have to. This is actually in the Dairy Ashford Station, and I know that, but that your daughter is actually a resident of District K. I just want to make sure that what you wanted the end result to be here today.
You see, you know, really, I'll start thinking, because they told me he work in Dairy Ashford area. From my house to Dairy Ashford area, it's about 10 or 12 miles. I goes out there, and they said that sergeant is not, he's not there, and I go back the next day to bring, two days, two or three days later, bring the complaint, then they say he was on gas now. And, you know, other words...
So were you trying to talk to the officer?
No, no.
Okay.
I want, will make the complaint wherever he work.
Were you able to make the complaint at the Dairy Ashford Station?
Right, at the station.
You did make the complaint?
At the gas station, man. I had, my daughter went to the bank and had it authorized and everything.
And you were able to make the complaint at the Dairy Ashford Station?
So, I like, you know, other words, I came up in it, so the council can look into it, because it's not, you know, everybody can't be aligned, you understand what I'm saying? Because, you know, this man just write tickets, write ticket, write ticket. Because you have, some officers have a quarter, some of them do it in order to get overtime and to come to court. So I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming down.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Penn. We'll take a look at it.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, sir.
The next speaker, Mr. John Schislewicz. To be followed by Ms. Irma Worthing.
Excuse me. I'd like to thank, first, I'd like to thank Councilmember, Member Coop Washington and John Gibbs for helping, my, excuse me, I and my neighbors getting a sewer line fixed behind our homes. Mayor, I need to, I need answers to a question that needs to be answered. Is the city planning to privatize the fire department EMS and our desolate waste department? And how serious are these plans? And if the plans are serious, will the city public announce these plans? Or all this just talk?
We're not planning to privatize, Mr....
Excuse me?
We're not planning to privatize, Mr. Schislewitz. We are not.
Excuse me?
We are not.
No.
No.
You're not planning?
No, sir.
Thank you, that's all of our, no, because you hear a lot of scuttlebutt. I got one, one person running for Councilman District C wanted to, wants to throw the firemen underneath the bus.
No.
Don't believe everything you hear.
Excuse me?
Don't believe everything you hear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker, Ms. Irma Worthing. Is not present. Ms. Stella Scott. Ms. Scott is not present. Ms. Nea Colbert is present, to be followed by Mr. Joe Crawford.
Yes. My name is Geneva Wartsworth Colbert. I'm also known as Nea Colbert. I've always been more than respectful when I've come to these council meetings, going way back to days of Councilmember Ada Edwards, when I was so brutally called out for my mental illness and my bipolar disorder. You know, as someone later said to me, well, you know, you would not have come up there and talked about her irritable, irritable bowel syndrome. I've been brutalized by this city council's non-response to valid complaints on housing. Now, you had a great big black guy brother who spoke about these gang members terrorizing us. Mayor Turner, when I leave here today, I have nowhere to go. I've been moved about this city like a chess piece. I've never been able to prevail in the courts, but I've always been able to present information to that Houston Housing Authority to show that I did not err and my voucher was restored. Now, I have presented information to this city council about gang members terrorizing me. I've been mocked and ridiculed by the police for my mental illness, but at the point that the gangsters started shooting guns over my head and then held a gun on me, then all of a sudden, I was not mentally ill and I had valid concerns. Now, this issue of 55-plus senior counties, it's our time. I worked from an early age. Latinos were not the first ones to clean office buildings. When other children were partying on a Saturday, I worked cleaning toilets. My daddy was one of the first black men to have a contract cleaning office buildings. I worked my way through school, my mentors Reverend William Lawson, and Reverend Lawson and Fierenza, in their aging years, are the two people who have supported me, along with now, don't know her status, Maria Jimenez, in this issue of housing. Now, you had goons show up and throw me out of an extended stay hotel for a $54 payment after I had paid almost $4,000, waiting to get that voucher situation completed, and I could not get there to file the 30-day extension. Now, I've been in four emergency rooms in the past week. I have been sexually exploited, and that's what happens when this city council, this city and police throw people out on the street. We are raped, we are exploited, not just women, men, children's family. Now, it's time for something to be done.
Your time has expired.
And Ms. Colbert, we have not thrown anyone out. I would suggest that it's the Houston Housing Authority that I think you have your beef with.
No, sir. I presented information to you and asked for a response from you several months ago. Yes, I passed information out to each one of these council members.
You may have, but it seems as though you're referring to the Houston Housing Authority, Ms. Colbert.
No, sir, I'm referring to, and I requested respectfully, a response from you after checking with the various entities, and I received no response from you, the police chief, and others. So it's like people have said, you keep putting the dirt under the rug, and it's getting dirty and dirty. So no, Mayor Turner, your family and mine grew up there in Acres Home. Now, they were men of integrity. In terms of sexual exploitation, may I finish one statement? When Deloitte Parker was screwing over me, he came to me and told me about you making sexual advances towards him. As well, there, you know, we covered up, oh, is that funny, Ms. Cohen? It's not funny. I was sexually abused by Reverend Charles Jackson in the Shrine of the Black Madonna, and I don't need to be out on those streets as an elder being, being raped. I need clear information about the status of the voucher. If it's gone, you said you got a brand-new housing, a state-of-the-art housing shelter to give people a fresh start, that's what I need.
Thank you, Ms. Colbert.
The next speaker, Mr. Joe Crawford. Is not present. Ms. Carol Ransom?
Ms. Ransom? Is not here.
Mr. Peter Frederick?
Mr. Frederick is here.
To be followed by Willie Thomas.
Last month, a white supremacist terrorist murdered 22 people in El Paso, Texas. His evil act was inspired by the murder of 51 people at Mosque St. Christ Church, New Zealand. That man's evil act was inspired by the murder of 77 people in Norway in 2011. In Norway, terrorist Anders Breivik left a manifesto that describes how he was inspired by other extremists and nationalist groups around the globe. Breivik pointed to the RSS in India. He praised the right-wing Hindu nationalism of the RSS. He praised the right-wing Hindu nationalism of the RSS and its goal of making India into a Hindu nation. He praised the RSS for how they dominate the streets and often riot and attack Muslims. He said the goals of white supremacists and the RSS are identical and that they should learn from each other and cooperate as much as possible. The RSS is a fascist paramilitary founded in 1925, the same year that Hitler published Mein Kampf. The RSS developed with inspiration from the Nazis, and it produced Narendra Modi. In 2002, Modi presided as soldiers of the RSS massacred 2,000 Muslims. They gang raped women, hacked people to death, burned people alive. Leaders of the pogrom later confessed on camera that Modi sanctioned their violence. For this reason, Modi was banned from entering the USA for 10 years. Today, under Modi's iron-fisted regime, Christians, Dalits, Muslims, Sikhs, and every Hindu who disagrees with the hate, violence, and supremacy of the RSS lives in fear of their lives. Modi's hands are stained with blood. Those who shake his hand in welcome cannot wash their hands of complicity in his crimes. Bishop Desmond Tutu once said, "If you are neutral in situations of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor." So what then if you roll out the red carpet for the oppressor? The philosopher Plato said, "Silence is consent." So what then if you raise your voice in support of the oppressor? Rather than "Howdy, Modi," the city of Houston ought to be saying "Adios, Modi." And I would like to enter into the record one copy for every council member of a 50-page briefing about Modi and the RSS.
You can give it, you can give it to Ronda, Ms. Soder. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker, Willie Thomas. Mr. Thomas will be followed by Mr. Derek Bros.
How y'all doing? I want to know what's going to happen with the safety of the people.